Yeah, good evening. Thank you. From the August board meeting we had for our pre-budget workshop, we kind of move into this, which is now hearings, and then in October, we'll ask you to pass the budget and the associated resolutions. So tonight, we have three different things to go over. We've got the bus, or four different, Bus Replacement Plan, which we'll go over first. Then we've got Capital Assets and Capital Projects. And then we've got what's called Form 3, which is kind of where the budget resides when we see what the budget is or what we're projecting the budget to be. And so I'll step back here for a minute. And this looks real similar to what we've done in the past as far as the structure of it. These forms are for every school. Every school uses the same thing. And we just changed the bus, obviously. And so what used to be 26, 27, 28, 29 goes over and up. And so this 2012 Thomas 72, 125 gets replaced in 2026. And so we did, this is a little different than the years past, where we've got one bus listed for each year. And that's simply because of some of the outcomes of Senate Rold Act 1 are not quite fully known yet. So we didn't want to commit a whole lot of purchasing on the bus side of things until we know what that looks like. And I'll get into that a little bit later. And then the 2011 will be replaced in 2027. 2012, 2014, and 2014 get replaced in 28, 29, and 30, respectively. So these numbers are totally, I mean, this is a pretty good estimate for this year. Beyond that, we're kind of totally guessing, and they'll get updated each year as we move them over and up. But 155 is a decent number for 2026. And then, obviously, buses go up. We're still having a hard time getting buses, you know, in a timely fashion, and that's nobody's fault. It's just kind of how the industry's working right now. So anyway, that's bus replacement from a hearing standpoint. Just have to go over that, but be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we order any early that we can get it if we are in need of one?
Yeah, we ordered one about 16 months ago that I think just came in maybe last week, if I remember right, two weeks ago, something like that.
So we can, I mean, I know they pay for them a certain time. I don't think we don't pay for them ahead of time. We have.
Correct. We don't pay for them ahead of time, but nowadays, all the vendors, you have to have a check ready for them when you pick up the bus.
Right, I understand that. And that's the way it was before too.
Okay.
They said they were going to be there at 11 o'clock, have a check, and so have a check and have it ready for them. So, but can we order?
Yeah, we can order whenever, right. As long as we're not, yeah.
And so we need this one next year because we need it.
Yeah, as long as we're not delivering prior to a bus turning 12 years old, we can order whenever, yeah. As kind of a follow-up there, a bus can be older than 12 years. This is a five-year plan based on the assumption that a bus lasts 12 years. A bus can stay longer than 12 years, just has to be inspected twice a year instead of once, yeah. Okay, next one. Our next one is the Capital Projects. So again, I cut a lot out of these, to be honest with you, just because Senate Rold Act 1, which we'll talk about on Form 3, I think is going to have some consequences, I know it's going to have some consequences to MSD. And so I cut a lot of these out. Doesn't mean we won't buy it, just means it won't come out of the operations fund. We can likely offset that with a bond or something, some of our funding mechanisms. So right now, just on the acquisition side, $100,000 in technology equipment. And that's different than the Capital Projects plan. So that's, it used to be a project plan, anything that happens gets on this list. This one's just acquisitions. So a lot of times, you see equipment, if you, yeah, basically just equipment for assets, right? On the next one, then, we've got projects. And so the projects, we took, I took that all out, or that's acquisition again, I'm sorry. On the projects, these were lowered quite a bit from what I originally thought, again, just because of Senate Rold Act 1. And so we've got a lot of building improvement and maintenance. We're working together with the bond, with the bond money that's kind of been left over as well as what's coming for deferred maintenance and everything. And so we've got a three-year plan here. Up here is 26, 27 to the end, and the next one would be 27 and 28. And again, I lowered those quite a bit based on Senate Rold Act 1 with the, in particular, the circuit breaker, because we thought we would lose a certain amount based on what LSAT was telling us during the legislative session. And then the DLGF released what their circuit breaker estimate was, and it was a, I think it was a 2,300% increase. So it was, so once I knew that, started lowering this, talked to Dr. Weidner about it, and it just kind of made that as conservative as possible. So again, any, be glad to answer any questions there as well. And then finally, and there's 27, 28. You can see that's the last line, 27, and then 28, all here. And then finally, we've got Form 3. Form 3 is what we put on the Gateway website. So this is what the taxpayer has access to, to see what we, like, are, first, they're going to see the information about this particular meeting as well as the adoption meeting. Then we'll see the max levy and the property tax circuit breaker. And then down here, we'll talk about budgets. So up here, obviously, we've got tonight's meeting at 6:00. And then the adoption would be the 21st at 6:00, again, both in this room. The max operations levy, so we're going to jump around a little bit, 6-899-325. Down here, our maximum estimated funds to be raised matches that box. We've got 6-899-325 in the operations box. So basically, what this means on the operation, on the max levy side, what that means is that whatever number we put here, we can put 6-899-325, or 16-899-325, or 106-899-325. The most we're getting is the 6-88, 6-899-325. And that's one of the things in place to protect the taxpayer. So the body, the governing body, a board, a council, or whatever, you know, whatever that body might be, can't get more than this amount. And that's one of the checks, on the checks and balances for the taxpayer to be capped, our levy here capped, that that's just about $6.9 million. So what's this next box? I keep talking about these property tax credits, the 431,100. That actually comes off of the six, basically $6.9 million here, gets reduced by the amount of tax cap loss that the district experiences. So if you, in a real basic example, if you lived in a $100,000 house, the most you could pay on that house would be $1,000 in property tax between the school, the county, and the city, the library, whatever, $1,000 total. If your bill generates, and the formula generates a $1,200 bill, the other $200 just goes away, and you're paying $1,000, and that's it, okay? If you add up, in that example, if you add up all the $200 in this district, it would equal $431,100. It just goes away. So we're levying for almost $6.9 million, taking away $431,000. And then that's what we have to actually fund our plan. Now, this is an estimate, and the last I looked, and I did not look today, I was traveling most of the day back from a conference, so I didn't look today. But the last I looked, our AV was not out. And so if our AV is out and it grows more than 4%, this will come down from 4311 to a number that is a factor of the growth of the AV minus what, minus the cap loss. Reason I say it would grow more than 4% is because down here, we're allowed to grow this max levy 4% over last year. So if we grow that 4%, but the AV grows more than 4%, the cap loss would likely will come down. If that grows less than 4%, which is probably not likely in a community with a lot of lake property, this could go up from 4311 to even further up. And so at this point, though, this, I just kind of went with what the state told us to estimate, because I certainly don't have any insight into what that might look like as far as what an assessed value looks like. And so I just use what they've got in here. This is actually pre-populated, I couldn't change that if I wanted to. So that's where those two numbers and how those two numbers play together. That number, then, the 6-899 minus the 431, is used as revenue from the tax levy to fund the budget estimate, in this case, in the operations fund of $9,366,562. And so how, you might look at that and say, how are we going to spend 9.3 million when we're only getting now, we're getting, you know, 6.5-ish million in revenue? And so there's also miscellaneous revenue that comes in there. So we've got, like, license excise taxes, commercial vehicle excise tax, financial institutions tax. Some of those are not a whole lot of money. Some of them do get into some pretty high six figures. There's also a local income tax in there, and so that gets split, that gets put in here. That one is only in there until 2028. In 2028, not only do we not get school, schools don't have a mechanism to make up their loss per Senate Rold Act 1, we're also going to lose our LIT, your local income tax, at that point in time, too. So nothing, nothing right now in this budget hearing to talk about there, just as you're planning, you know, probably need to plan for some loss in revenue. Besides Senate Rold Act 1's tax head, the LIT will go away in 2028 as well. So going down here on the next lines, we've got Rainy Day. Rainy Day is a non-levy fund, and so there's no levy for this, there's no excess levy, no current tax levy. We've got $1,008 in budget. That's the same as it's been for two, three, or four years now. We don't plan to spend that, but it is kind of there as an emergency. And it's there for, if there was an emergency, we needed it, and we didn't have this appropriation, we'd have to come to you, special board meeting, ask for, you know, do a hearing, ask for the appropriation. And it'd probably take, could take between 20 and 30 days to get that process done. And so instead, we're just asking for it now, which, again, not planning to use it or ask.
Make a motion, we adjourn them. Open hearing.
I'll second that.
A second.
And the vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggart?
Yes.
Mr. Poor?
Hi.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Sturry?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0. Next up, approval of claims. Any questions, comments regarding the claims? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the claims.
I'll second that.
And the vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggart?
Yes.
Mr. Poor?
Hi.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Sturry?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, 7-0. Personnel considerations. Dr. Weidner.
Board, in your packet, you do have personnel considerations for this evening, September 16th, 2025. Contained in those recommendations are, we do have some resignations, termination, appointments, and reassignments. So I asked the board to approve those as presented.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And the vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggart?
Yes.
Mr. Poor?
Hi.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Sturry?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0, thank you. Special reports. Mr. Winslow, IREAD results.
Good evening, board. I'm really excited to share some updates with you about IREAD. We have some really exciting news to share with you, but I want to start with just a couple of statistics for you and some updated legislation that's happened with IREAD over the past couple of years. So first thing, that's really important to the work that we're doing at the elementary level. The Indiana Department of Education released this statistic that's really important. Students that pass IREAD III are 35% more likely to graduate from high school, which is really important for us to ensure that we're supporting them all the way through that graduation. And then this next statistic comes from the Reading Association. Around 90% of children who are poor readers in fourth grade will never catch up. And so that is why some of those retention laws have come to be with IREAD. And then the last fact is around 95% of students can learn to read at basic levels of proficiency if we're giving them what they need to be successful in our classrooms. So as we move into the results and data, which I know you're really excited to hear about, I just want to talk to you about a few updated things that have happened. First of all, Indiana still has the goal of all, of 95% of third-grade students passing IREAD by the year 2027. So next year will be 2026, and we're hoping to inch even closer to that and make that goal by 2027 as a district also. Some legislation around IREAD that's come up first is that legislation around retention that I was talking about. And really, that is in place because it's really difficult for students to catch up if they're not successful by the end of grade three. So students that don't pass at the end of grade three and do not have a good cause exemption are required to be retained in the third grade for an additional year. Some good cause exemptions that are included with that are students that have IEPs, students that are multilingual learners and in an EL program for less than two years, students that have already been retained once in third grade, have been already retained twice leading up to third grade, or pass Math ILEARN. Those are ways that students can continue to be promoted on. We do want to make sure that if we promote those students, we're continuing to give them the supports that they need to be successful, though. Also, one thing that was new this year with legislation is students that do not pass in grade three, or they're at risk in grade two, need to have an individualized reading plan. So our principals, our instructional coaches, our interventionists, and our teachers have been working together to make sure those plans are created and communicated with families to ensure we're giving students exactly what they need moving forward. So grade two, that was, it's a third-grade test, but we give it to grade two students, and that's a new requirement this year. In the past, we've opted in, and we're able to see if they're at risk, on track, or pass at the end of second grade. And the last thing, that's been something we've been working through with teachers, is to support that teacher capacity in supporting those early learners, their early literacy learners. There is a new requirement that all teachers have to pass a praxis test around early literacy and have an additional 80 hours of training around science of reading. And so we've been working really closely with our teachers to support them in that process. Our teachers that are new coming to us reach the requirement through their early prep college, their college experience, but our teachers that are currently in the buildings need to get there through the 80 hours. Last year, we had lots of strategies in place to support students. So the first strategy that we worked hard to get going right away is parent nights to provide information and resources to support students. All of the things that we did last year, we planned to do again this year. We offered after-school tutoring for students in small groups or one-on-one with teachers that are highly qualified. Additionally, we had IREAD readiness groups, where we had over 140 second- and third-grade students stay after school three weeks leading up to the test, and we provided them with preparation, worked with transportation to get them busing home later in the day as well, for those students that needed that staying after school. We planned small group instruction during the day and during their focus times. There was summer school offerings available as well to ensure that we could give them the best boost possible before their last attempt. We sent parent letters explaining this new legislation to ensure everyone was aware of all of this information. We had monthly virtual meetings where we provided recordings also to discuss different strategies. And then we also had lots of teachers join us this summer to ensure that we were improving our instruction and our resources to support students even further this school year. One addition we're making this school year is parents have really asked for, they loved the webinars, but they were a little long. They're like, can I get a five-minute video that's quick and easy for me to access and implement with my students? So we're going to be working with teachers, coaches, and admin to create some of those quick videos for quick practice with our families. So now, we're going to get to the exciting part, which is the data. And so I think some of you might have seen some of this on social media, but it is very exciting information that's coming out from our schools. All of our schools have record-breaking achievement rates. So every single school broke every record within achievement, and every school grew. We also had zero retentions across the district. So no third graders were held back because they either met a good cause exemption or they passed like they were supposed to. So at Carlin Park, we saw a 2.9% increase. At Hendry Park, we saw a 5.2% increase, getting up to 88.3%. Pleasant Lake Montessori had the highest achievement in the district with 94.4% and a 13.1% increase over the year before. And lastly, Ryan Park also had double-digit increases of 10.9% and a growth to 92.3% at the end of the 2025. So all of that added together created our district growth and our overall proficiency. We were up 7.3% as a district and 90.3% overall achievement, which I really believe is going to position us well to get to that 2027 goal. So as we look at the data historically on the next couple of slides, this is second-grade results, which is not published by the state, so I just wanted to make sure to share it with you tonight. Back in 2022 was the first year that we could opt in to IREAD in second grade, and we were one of the few area districts to do that. And so you'll notice, we were at 34.7% passing or on track, because in second grade, we got to pass on track or at risk. And on average, 97% of our second graders that are on track pass when they go to third grade. So these percentages together show you the pass and on-track rate. You can see we've grown pretty significantly, and back in 2024, we passed the state average and have continued to stay above the state average in second grade. Just as a reminder, there are third-grade standards on this test, so it's very exciting to see so many students getting to where they need to be. In third grade, you can see we've been on quite a journey of growth there also. So in the top row, we started back in 2022 at 77%, experienced some growth, and had really large growth last year going into this year. We now are three whole percentage points above the state average, and we grew more than the state did last year, which is really exciting. So again, our first time ever being above the state average was in 2024, and we were able to maintain that into 2025. And as we just move to the last couple of slides here, I really want to emphasize that this didn't happen by chance. Our educators, our IAs, our administrators, our coaches have all stepped up to ensure there's urgency for kids. You can see some action shots here of teachers and administrators that have worked really hard to ensure we've got what we need in place to support kids. And so I really want to celebrate them tonight and also just share with you our goal of that 93% this next year, which will definitely put us in good shape to get that 95% in 2027. So I have any questions?
When teachers have to give these counts for 80 hours, are we covering that, or was that what the teachers?
Many of our teachers already had it completed through some things that we had in place through SRF funds. So we have letters, we had letters training. It was. Any teachers that didn't participate in letters are taking care of it on their own, and the state did provide compensation for that over last year for them to complete that.
So they knew about it, and they knew they would take that, and it was covered?
Yeah. All right, thank you so much.
Board, you have two requests in your packet that I just want to bring to your attention. The first one is from Henry Park Elementary School from Principal Stellhorn. He is requesting permission to take his second and fifth graders to, oh goodness gracious, Souderville. There you go. So this is kind of an annual trip. You'll get a few more of these requests from some of our other elementaries as they come through. So down below, I did ask, you know, social studies standards, and he went back through and listed all of those, so I think that is most appropriate. The second request that you have in your packet this evening is you have a request for the Mr. Havens and the band director about going for the Angola High School band trip to Florida. If you look in your little write-up, it sounds like they have a pretty exciting day. They typically don't do this every single year. They do these kind of every other year. This coming year, they're going to take about 40 kids to go down there and do some different activities. It is really kind of nice because it's understood, but let's be instrumental workshops. So kids will get to do some different clinics and kind of showcase some of their talents down there. So very worthwhile trip. He does have enough chaperones going down there with him. Mrs. Lang, the assistant director, will be down there with them too. So I ask for your approval for both of these trips that I bring you tonight. Charter bus. I think it comes down to the timing. Talking with Mr. Myers, we're taking 40 of those kids. It's coming around Thanksgiving time a little bit, that week prior too. So some of the kids have other commitments and some of those kinds of things, and other kids do other activities as well, but there's a good chunk of them to go do down there. So it's a worthwhile trip. They've done this in the past a few different times. I don't know what those numbers have been typically in the past, but you know, talking to Bob and Shannon, this is kind of a worthwhile trip that they like to do. I don't think there's a specific number that they necessarily have to have, but I think this is the four. That's I asked for the number of kids who were going, and then, you know, I wanted to make sure there were enough parents that were going down there so they have enough chaperones going down there, so I feel pretty good about it. That I do not know, but I do know that Mr. Myers does have it all covered, you know, through the band parents and through the band boosters will take care of those costs. And I can get that for you, Mr. Reidenhour.
I make a motion we go ahead and approve both of the field trips out of state. I'll second that.
The vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggert?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Reidenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven-zero. Next up, the David C. Ford Tech Cadre Grant. Dr. Ray Lou.
Board, I'm requesting your permission for us to apply for and accept the Digital Learning Leadership Cadre Grant. It's a David C. Ford grant from the Department of Education. This is quite an honor. Mr. Winslow has served on this tech cadre for the last few years. He continues to be invited to apply. There are only 15 educators in the state of Indiana that serve on this committee. It truly is kind of a who's who of people who are making a difference across the state. He participates in lots of trainings on the learning lab and kind of sharing his expertise with teachers across the state. But also, this provides funding for him to be able to attend a conference and to attend an in-person meeting as part of this grant where he also continues to be professionally developed and can bring that information back. So I'd love for us to be able to continue to let him do that.
Make a motion to approve the grant.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggert?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Reidenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next would be the Bowen Center MOU. Dr. Ray Lou.
Board, each year I bring to you our agreement with Bowen is now Bowen Health as they have converted. This covers our student assistance program. It covers our skills coaches. It covers the employee assistance program. This just outlines what they provide to us and what we will do to make sure that those relationships work well. It also describes how payment is made. That is done either through Medicaid billing, signed off on by the parents, or billed to insurance after they've exhausted those two free sessions that are provided to all students and staff. So just requesting your permission to continue that relationship and those services.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we continue our, the, continue with the MOU from Bowen Center.
I'll second that.
And the vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggert?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Reidenhour?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, Work-Based Learning Experiences. Dr. Ray Lou.
So Board, as the diploma requirements have changed, and we have been continuing to work on putting programs in place and monitoring in place and experiences in place, the state is also continuing to do the same. In your packet, you have a list of newly defined work-based learning experiences. The document you have shows which of those experiences count toward which of those diploma seals for the new diplomas. The last two pages in your packet, and I think up on the screen, list new course codes. So currently, we have the Career Exploration Internship, and we have some work-based learning capstones. They have added additional course codes. This is how we will report to the state that students have met which work-based learning experience for them to be awarded their diploma seal moving forward. So we have students who are going to be participating in, I would say, half of these this year. Our goal over the course of the year is to expand into the apprenticeship space. That will be new for us, but we want to have your permission to be offering each of these different types of work-based learning experiences and make sure we can get those set up in Power School so we're ready to report what our students are achieving.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
And the vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggert?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Reidenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, the 2020 Youth Leadership MOU.
So along with work-based learning, we are looking for multiple ways to be able to achieve that. We have found an organization called 2020 Youth Leadership that provides simulated work-based learning experiences. Option number three in your packet kind of overviews what that work-based learning experience is. Students actually work through different online modules. There are business experts who join them weekly, who serve as their mentors. 2020 Youth Leadership actually provides all of the supervision for this work-based learning. They record all of the hours. They sign off on the experiences that students have had. So it takes that monitoring lift off of our work-based learning coordinator. They carry that for us and just provide that documentation back to us. But this really is a great opportunity for our students who have transportation limitations to be able to get a job. Students who might be three and four sport athletes are involved in all kinds of other extracurricular activities that limit their ability to have jobs, you know, on traditional schedules. This can be completed at any point in time. There's a 75-hour option and 150-hour option. Those meet the requirements for two different levels of seals for our students. So this is a great kind of alternative for students who really need to get those work-based learning hours in for their seals. Work-based learning is also part of the new accountability model for our schools this year moving forward. So there's a committee at the high school working hard to identify all of the students and their work experiences and working with them to make sure that we are able to get those hours to students. So this could be completed during an academic lab. It could be completed during an Apex scheduled online course using their software instead of Apex software. It can be done at home. It can be done before, after school, really however it works best for the student. So I'm asking your permission for us to move forward with this partnership. This program will be paid for out of Title IV funds, and work-based learning is one of the experiences that Title IV is designated to be able to pay for. So not coming out of district funds, but really opening a lot of doors for our students. And if you look at those rotations, onboarding, marketing, sales, finance, entrepreneurship, human service, customer service, and app design, those really are great skills for students, no matter what field they might pursue after school.
This will be nice for alternative kids as I think about this kind of moving forward. Sometimes their life is a little hectic right now, so to be able to get some of the seals that they need to be able to still graduate and still meet the requirements. This will be a nice addition and a supplement to those kids doing that. Plus, it's going to get awfully crazy here in the next couple of months. I think I've talked to Dr. Ray Lou several times. You're going to have a lot of school corporations really competing hard with some of our local businesses, and they may not be able to take everybody. So to be able to have this kind of computer option, to be able to do some of these things and keep our kids on track will be a good thing for us, so.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion we go ahead and approve the MOU with the youth leadership.
The vote, please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggert?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Reidenhour?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, the SME Prime Advanced Manufacturing Program. Dr. Ray Lou.
So Board, I have one more exciting program to bring to you this evening. SME is a society of manufacturers and engineers. They have a foundation that has been working with schools to build out programming that hopefully will provide students with the skills to replace that generation of workers who is getting ready to retire. We know there's a significant skills gap facing our nation. We know there's a significant need for manufacturing in our community. So we were actually approached by SME Prime to partner with them, to partner with the foundation, to be able to provide experiences, opportunity, equipment, training, curriculum to expand our current advanced manufacturing program. So I have a quick video that overviews what they will be providing to us, and then I'll add a little more context, and we'll go from there.
Manufacturing is facing a crisis. As the existing workforce ages out, the supply of new talent into the industry has fallen short of demand. And there stands to be a 2 million worker shortage by the end of the decade. Fortunately, the SME Education Foundation's SME Prime Initiative is here to help. SME Prime builds customized manufacturing and engineering programs in high schools across the country. Each program tailored to meet the needs of the local industry to develop a pool of skilled talent, work-trained, and often certified to build specific roles within the local manufacturing facilities. By partnering with local manufacturers, SME Prime provides a handful of deliverables free of charge to students and schools alike, including equipment, curricula, teacher training, extracurricular activities, scholarships, and sustainability funding. These deliverables offer all students the opportunity to explore seven manufacturing and engineering pathways, illustrating the enormous scope of activity and technological innovation in modern manufacturing and engineering. The growing SME Prime School Network delivers to millions, tens of thousands of training experience in nearly 100 communities across dozens of states. And 89% of SME Prime School graduates enter the manufacturing workforce or pursue a post-secondary education in engineering or manufacturing disciplines. Contact us at smeef.org to learn more and work at it.
So with this partnership, they will actually contact all of the advanced manufacturing employers in our area, survey them on what processes they use, what equipment they use, how they go about their assembly process, and then put together a package for our school of the equipment that's actually used locally. So over the last couple of years, we've written many grants. We've used some S R dollars. We've got about a quarter million dollars' worth of equipment right now in our Advanced Manufacturing Pathway Lab. Those are all trainers. So we've got a Fanuc robot. That's the training robot that we have in the classroom. If there are different robots used in different businesses in our community, they will actually purchase those robots for us, and then they'll work with the businesses on how they're used. They'll create a training curriculum for all of that equipment. They'll send our teacher to training to train him on how to use all of that equipment. They order all of that standard material in. They're responsible for the installation of it. We'll be expanding outside our current classroom into the former kind of Woods Lab. There's a lot of outdated equipment there that I'll be asking for your permission for us to dispose of as we get the lists around of the things that will discontinue to make space for this new equipment. But we're very excited to have all of this provided to us at no cost. It's a three-year program where they will phase in year one. This will be the additions to what we have, year two, year three. In year four, we simply continue to report to them the number of students, the number of certifications that our students are earning, and then we can put in a request for ongoing costs. So if we need filament for the 3D printers, we can ask for $14,000 for filament, and they provide those actual dollar amounts to us also as an ongoing partnership. So we're very excited to be able to get this launched. Equipment and training will be for the '26, '27 school year, but we want to be able to start contacting businesses this fall. So if we are adding any additional course expansion, so we would be looking at expanding into industrial maintenance, expanding our mechatronics and robotics program. So those would be additional courses we want to put in the course catalog, which we publish in December. But we want to make sure that that's indeed the direction our businesses need us to be going to supply the workforce that's needed here. So we do have space, and we have a space that we can expand. There is enough, and there's a space that we can expand into beyond the current space. Right now, I feel like we've got a pretty healthy amount of equipment in the room we're currently using, so we will definitely be expanding into the larger space for next year. And then the following year, there's another room we can take over if we need to. So right now, Mr. Savage would continue to be our instructor. The programs are with, the equipment are really almost individually paced, so students can spend as much time on a module as they need. Once they pass that online, then they do their certification for that and then move into the next module. There are about 15 to 20 students in a classroom at a time. There is room in his schedule to be able to add two additional advanced manufacturing courses. Students would still complete the three core pathway courses that they, that we offer now, but we have students who will be able to go into, they can actually double up on those, take two classes in a year. They can double up and expand into either one of these additional areas based on their interest, or they can go into some of those work-based learning experiences. Yeah, so, so right now, he's very excited and is, and is doing great work with our students. So I think we've got him for a few more years. Beyond that few more years, when we are ready to look for either an additional teacher or a replacement teacher, SME Prime will stay partnered with us and send our teacher through training to make sure that, that a new person coming in is able to take that program over and keep it up and running. Yeah, so typically that's, so I think Mr. Savage is a unicorn at this point. There are so few advanced manufacturing technology teachers still practicing who have the degree for. the degree for that. It will likely be a workplace specialist teacher that we would hire, so somebody who's been working in the field for a number of years, who is ready to move out of that field and do something that's maybe a little less physical and inspiring and working to build, you know, those replacement workers moving forward is who we would be looking for. A workplace specialist license can be achieved fairly easily with the Department of Education. It's documenting your work experience in the area where you're wanting to teach and then they credential you. So I'm not worried about being able to find someone. Finding the right person is a challenge, but there are definitely people out there that, that I think we can generate interest with. And Dr. Wiedenhofer did ask, what if, what if for some reason we need to fold the program? And they said, we would just ask that you donate the equipment to some other place where it can be used, so.
What's the difference between what Jim's teaching now and what this program is? I know he's certifying some students in areas in electronics and things like that. What's the difference?
Yes, so this would be offering additional certifications beyond what, what we currently offer and being able to provide more hands-on equipment for some of what we're already doing and expanding a little bit more into some additional certifications, probably not more than three additional certifications in year one, but we'll see what the businesses come back and say they need and that will allow us to expand as we need to, to be able to do that.
Is there any programs out there for middle school kids to start getting taste of all this that's available at the high school? I know we've brought about every hands-on.
Yeah, so, so up until this school year, Mr. Savage was at the middle school at least part-time. We've moved him full-time to the high school so he can focus on this program. So there's not currently a middle school program. Part of that's due to staffing restrictions and making sure that we've got what we need to be able to expand the program at the high school level. I would love to be able to offer that again, but it would require adding staff back to be able to, to offer that stealth high school. We also are at the middle school. We also have additional requirements with the new diploma that are being offered as core courses that are required for graduation now at the middle school. So it kind of took that section that students had available to make a choice out. So now all students are getting a required preparing for college and careers course and a required computer science course. So there's, those are their two eighth grade electives, so.
Any other questions?
Electives, if you're going to have to tell them what they have to. You are correct. Mandatory electives is what they are.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion we go with the SME Prime Advanced Manufacturing Program.
I'll second that.
And the vote please.
Mr. Archibald?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maggert?
Yes.
Mr.?
Hi.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Future meetings. All meetings will be in this room at McCutcheon Administration Center Boardroom at 6:00 PM. Next meeting will be October 21st, November 18th, and December 9th. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, Board, we do have just a few items for you for this evening. First of all, this is homecoming week starting Monday. The seniors and the juniors and everyone else at the high school are very much enjoying their time this week going on, so we invite you to the homecoming game on Friday where we take on Lakeland. I do want to give a huge shout out to the city of Angola. If you notice, when you drive around Monument Circle, you will see our banners are back up there and they even went above and beyond. And if you look at the monument lights at night, it's got that yellow and purple glow in the streets down there, so we really did it up well for homecoming. So Mrs. Dow was instrumental. She knows someone who knows someone, so when you have those kind of connections, those are great things too. We want to give a huge shout out to Cameron Hospital, the sponsored family fun night last Friday night where we had the bounce houses. It was great because we had our neighbors from the north who came up and we played that little old football game up there, but it was a great night seeing everybody together jumping in those bounce houses. It was interesting. We had a couple of kids who were in tears, weren't quite ready to be done with the bounce houses, but we were able to go to Cameron and say, 10 more minutes, 10 more minutes. So the bounce housing people did a great job of just extending some time so the kids could have a little extra time. So very much appreciate everybody's help with that. If you didn't see in the newspaper, I want to give a huge congratulations to Jordan Taylor, a national merit semifinalist. This is a huge award, less than 1% get picked out of all high school seniors, so to be able to be part of that process and to be, have, be this far along with it, that is awesome. We have our fingers crossed hoping he finishes it out, but it is an outstanding honor for sure. And then lastly, you heard it tonight, you hear about all the great things, especially at our elementaries, and I want to give you a huge shout out to Mr. Winslow, to his teachers, to his instructional coaches, to Dr. Relu, because that team has done an exceptional job of really growing our young ones. Those kids coming up through the ranks and being reading is the most foundational thing that you can do because it plays a huge part in middle school, plays a huge part in high school, it plays a huge part in your college classes, and even when you're into the workforce. Our kids have to be strong readers. The amount of time that these folks do, they give up their weekends, they're there until 5:00 at night doing tutoring sessions with kids. Our buses run different hours just to make sure that we can accommodate working parents to get our kids where they're. I am extremely impressed and grateful for the work that Jonathan does, Dr. Relu and our teachers, our instructional coaches, and even the moms and dads, because it's hard coming home when you're coming home from work and then sitting there, come on kiddos, we got to work on some things. So I'm extremely proud of our community and everything that they've done and it really shows 90% when you look at those and better yet, no kids being retained back into third grade, that is even a bigger deal. Let me tell you, I just got back from a conference and that is not the case to a lot of the other Indiana school districts that I spoke with. So that is huge kudos to you and your team, Mr. Winslow. Thank you for what you do each and every day. You are very much appreciated, so thank you very much.
Mr. President? Thank you very much for all you do. Any other board member comments? If there's nothing else before the board, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.